Call to order of the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol Board of Supervisors for Monday, September 23 at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance to the law.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call to the council's forum.
Supervisor Weidman?
Here.
Supervisor Teis?
Here.
Chairman Zipperer?
Here.
Supervisor Wolpel?
Here.
Supervisor Stavenas?
Here.
All present, and the next item would be the meet and greet. Normally our custom to meet those that are in the audience this evening. We have introduced ourself, and Linda is our -- Linda Wayne is our town clerk treasurer. So we don't have to go through that again, so. Why don't we start with you, Greg?
Greg Coulthurst, Door County Saltwater. Here in case you have a question on Dunes Lake letter, or if you have questions on Frank Mighty's project. We'll just start at that point.
Very good. Carl?
Carl Schultz came to complement the board on the flying art exhibit.
Victoria Serenich, and good evening. I live at 4145 Cherry Road in Sebastopol, and I'm here as an observer for the League of Women Voters. But in addition, Carl and I have delivered a letter for you from Door property owners, and it's supported by the following local organizations: The Ridges Sanctuary, the League of Women Voters of Door County, the Door County Environmental Council.
Okay, I think we're going on beyond the meet and greet, but.
Did you want me to speak at a later point in the --
What is it in regards to, "I don't have a letter from you"?
Oh, I -- we just delivered it to Linda, and I would like to read this -- take this opportunity to read this letter into the record for the benefit of the Sebastopol residents that are unable to be here this evening.
Well, usually it helps if the chairman knows what's going on, you know?
Oh, well, at the public meet and greet, I thought that how would I know?
Okay, but what is your letter in regard to?
It's in regard to the 2014 budget planning for public lawns.
I placed it into the budget folder.
Go right in.
Okay. And it's supported by the following organizations: Door County Environmental Council, Lake Shore Natural Resource Partnership, Sustained Door, Crossroads at Big Creek, and Wild Ones. And we thank you for this opportunity. "September 23, 2013, Regarding the 2014 Budget Planning for Public Lawns. Dear Chairman Zipperer and supervisors for the Town of Sebastopol, The organizations represented on this letter have joined together to advocate for safe lawns in Door County and bring an end to the practice of repetitive and costly application of pesticides, including herbicides, to private and public lawns. When planning your 2014 budget, we, the undersigned and your neighbors, ask that you consider safer alternatives for public lawns, parks, and playing fields. The commonly sprayed herbicides are harmful, especially to children and pets, causing various forms of cancer and endocrine effects. The warning flags and reentry limitations are ineffective and insufficient. Rather than advise against or prohibit entry, make the lawn safe to walk and play upon. Moreover, universal application of herbicides is expensive and unnecessary. With a little planning, a lawn or a playing field can be taken off pesticides and synthetic fertilizers. The natural lawn and field will be more drought tolerant and cost less to maintain. Please keep these considerations in mind on October 3 as you develop the budget for 2014 and make contracts for lawn care. Local landscapers can provide safe alternatives if you ask. To learn more or contact us, go to doorpropertyowners.org on the web. Respectfully submitted by Patrick Fitzgerald and Dr. Peter Sigmund on behalf of Door Property Owners and Safe Lawns in Door County, Marty Karski on behalf of The Ridges Sanctuary, Town of Sebastopol residents Peter Wyatt, Russell May, Bob Graff, Carl Schultz, and myself, Victoria Serenich. And thank you very much for your time."
Okay, we'll put that over in our budget.
Certainly, I agree.
October 3.
You're great tonight's presentation.
All right, very good. And we didn't meet the videographer, but everybody knows Laddie with the new haircut today. The agenda has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has been.
And a motion then to adopt.
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as printed, September 23, 2013.
I'd like to second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any common question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I oppose. Approval of the minutes from August 19, 2013.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by John and a second by?
Second.
Chuck, was that?
Yep.
To approve the minutes of the 19. Are there any corrections? Can never be any corrections, she does such a commendable job. All in favor, 65, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And it's carried. Financial reports, questions or comments? Look again at the budget as 2013 from January through August. And then the account balances and the transactions listed by date. If there are no questions, a motion to approve, but lay some file.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dan, seconded by Chuck. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And it's carried. Oral committee reports, do we have any? Chuck, do you want to give us anything on the kiosk?
First off, with the room tax, Door County Tourism Zone Commission. Senators Luther Olson and Gary Fies are seeking co-sponsors for a room tax bill they plan to reintroduce requesting at the lodging industry and are requested by the lodging industry and the Association of Visitor and Conventioners. The legislators introduced a similar bill last session with the League strongly opposed. And like last session, this bill removes municipal discretion in the spending of room tax revenues for tourism promotion and development. It also eliminates the grandfather clause that allowed the municipalities with room tax ordinances prior to 1994 to continue to use their room tax dollars as they see fit. The bill is requiring municipalities that currently retain more than 30% of their room tax revenue in their general funds to reduce that amount to 30% over the next six years. Requires the municipalities to forward 70% of the room tax revenue that must be spent on tourism promotion and development to a tourism entity or a commission. It would allow a person collecting the room tax to retain 3% of the tax collected to cover the person's processing fees if the person pays the tax to the municipality as prescribed by the municipality. That has to do with people using credit cards. Requires the municipality annually to certify and report to the DOR the amount of room tax revenue collected, the room tax rate imposed by the municipality in the previous year, as well as a detailed accounting of the amounts that were forwarded to a commission or tourism entity, and such an accounting for the amounts of at least $1,000 expended by the commission or the tourism entity. And it would allow a tourism entity or tourism organization to file a written complaint with the municipality if the municipality is mistakenly or not allocating using room tax revenue as required by statute. And creates an optional opportunity for mediation instead of immediate litigation. Now, the League of Municipalities strongly opposes this bill again. They're asking that everybody contact their legislators and tell them not to sign LRB 1901 and LRB 2963. It seems they've been having trouble with the people that were grandfathered in before 1994, where the room tax money was just put in the general fund and the municipality spent it as they see fit. We have no problem with that being corrected, but it's all the other little things in there that they are starting to come down on. I mean, if our municipality has to file all these reports with the DOR, we turned everything over to the commission to start with. So the commission would have to supply all those reports. And the biggest problem here is that Gary Fies never came back and discussed anything with our local tourism organization, which is working according to the laws, and it's working fine. They have a problem with some other places in the state, and they just up and decided to write some laws and don't even know where they're coming from. So until they sit down and really have a discussion, we do not believe that this law is in the best interest of our municipality.
Did I hear you correctly? There's going to be a reduction of the 30% to what?
Well, in Door County, we have a commission collecting the tax for the entire county. Other places, the municipality collects that tax.
Oh, okay.
In certain places, they are not turning over the 70% to an entity and spending it on tourism. They were just spending it on tourism on their own or, you know, retaining the funds in the general fund. A big argument always came up that the municipality has to fix the parks, keep the beaches clean, pick up the garbage, repair the roads, and they attribute all that to the local people, but also to tourism. And the tourism industry is saying, "That's your problem. It's -- the tourist should not be held accountable for fixing the infrastructure." Well, if we didn't have the infrastructure, the tourists wouldn't come in the first place, so. Chuck, do you know what the administrative overhead is for the room tax? For our commission, it's 4% of the tax collected over the whole county. That's what we retain. That we retain, but the visitor, I mean the. I'm saying it myself as the commission commissioner. The commission retains 4% of the tax for administrative purposes. We had to develop our own software, hired people to put this computer programming together. We retain a very extensive database on the tourism numbers and the dollars and where the money is spent. We get together monthly with the Door County Visitors Bureau, and they supply us with reports. We really have an organization that's working here. If the rest of the state would follow our lead, they'd really have something. Instead, they're trying to destroy it. Well, we're really in compliance with this bill. We're overly compliant.
Your advisor's going to be at county board on Thursday. So can you give me something to share?
We only get -- we take 30 -- we retain 30%, 4% administrative. We don't even retain, we receive. The commission collects the tax. We receive as the municipality 30%.
What's collected?
The commission retains 4% for administrative purposes, and the remaining 66% goes to the tourism entity, which is the Door County Visitors Bureau.
Right.
If this thing were to pass as it stood, it does not impact our 30%, though, correct?
Not at this point. The only thing that they didn't mention in here, though, is they would like to see the 4% administrative cost or whatever amount it would be taken out of the municipal 30%.
That's kind of what I figured.
Rather than take it on top.
Yep.
And then the other kicker in there is, it's not in the bill. I mean, it's another part of the tourism entity. We investigate all leads of people who are renting and not paying taxes, or they are not permitted. Every transient renter in the county is supposed to be permitted by the commission and collect the tax and turn it over to the commission. And those that are not doing so manage to get caught. We have six, seven of them every month on a list that are going through a process on our policy as to notification and warnings and that. Eventually, they wind up in court. Some of those court cases we win, but some we lose. When the commission wins the case, the taxes are paid, the penalties are paid, the commission keeps the money and uses it to go after the next people. The problem now is some of these people don't pay their fines, and some of the cases that we actually lost or didn't lose for reason other than the people went bankrupt and there was no money to collect. The commission is thinking about turning that bill back to the municipality. If they lose a court case for any reason, they want the municipality to pay the cost of that litigation out of our 30%.
Our commission?
Our 30%.
The tourism commission, our local commission. This was brought up at an executive meeting, and it was shot down at the last meeting, but it most likely will come again, and it's something to stay on top of.
Okay, thanks. Give me a copy of that. Okay, did you have anything on the kiosk?
The kiosk is going along real well. The posts were erected, the concrete is poured. We were waiting for the excavator to come in and do the final grading today. Evidently, they got sidetracked. They should show up in the next day or two, and the landscaper is waiting. So soon as that's done, landscaping will go in. The panels are supposed to be shipped on the 23rd. Hopefully, we'd have them within a week. It was my hopes that the whole project would be up and running by the end of the month. It looks good, whether it happens or not. Never know, weather could change or something else might go wrong. Wisconsin Public Service supplied a grant toward this project. It was a $15,000 grant, but the proceeds were spread over three years, $5,000 a year for three years. They requested a photo shoot of one of the kiosks or maybe a couple of them to put in the annual report. Their photo opportunity has to be completed by October 2. So that was the big push to get our kiosk as complete as possible so that we could get in that photo shop.
Will we need actors, Chuck? Somebody to stand there and look good in front of the board?
Are you available, Joe?
He's able to stand with me on the show.
Was notified today, though, that they had chosen the Ig Harbor kiosk as to where they want to take their picture. Whether that holds yet or not, we're still going to argue that fact because we are the lead-in to this project. The byway starts and ends down there at Grandma Tommy's, so we feel that ours is probably the proper place to start with.
And along those same lines, late entries tonight are Steve and Kate Lovenstein, who are the owners of Grandma Tommy's and have really -- why don't you shoot their pictures so everybody can see them? They're the shakers and the movers on this whole thing and really been gone overboard as far as allowing us to be on their property and as well getting the whole act together, so. Chuck has been working with them on a regular basis. And what you see there is very nice. So we thank you for your participation, and it'd be nice if we had more people in the community come forward as you have.
Our whole project is coming -- is so close to being right on budget that it's not even worth arguing about. Had it not been the fact that the WPS grant was spread over three years, we'd have actually been under budget. Right now, it looks we may be just about $300 old, but we're not finished yet, so there's still trimming we can do.
You want to say anything, Steve or Kate? Well, thanks for your participation.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. Okay, any other oral committee reports? Okay, the written copy, part of your agenda was the Door County Tourism Zone Commission and Executive Committee meeting. Also, the plant commission for the town on August 14. The next item would be the license and permit. We'll show the permits issued by the Door County Planning Department and also those issued by the independent inspection, limited for the activity going on with their inspection involved. The license and permits concluded, continuing business. The discussion in action, I indicated the last time around that I would make contact with Dean Bullenberg from the University of Wisconsin Extension in regard to the application of -- or the landscape application that we had our previous discussion on. I made that contact on the 6th of September. I was assured that we were in compliance as we provided him the copy of the information provided by our applicator. And the only recommendation coming forward was that if we could afford more time, although it's only required that it be dry, it would be to our advantage a lot more time before there was any activity on the grass or on the applied area. Liability-wise, we are protected by the applicator. True green, is it?
Spring green.
Spring green. And according to their warrants and everything else, we would not be responsible. I do know that we've had an argument about it in the past, and I do not wish to continue that. We'll do it down the line of piece, tonight's indicator. Apparently, there's some interest with whether or not we're going to budget money for that application, so. We'll take another look at it October 3. And as far as tonight is concerned, I was questioning Dean relative to some of the comments brought up by Dick and others here at the meet. And he assured us that there would be no liability on our behalf, although he did encourage us to allow a little more time in the drying of the product, so. Next item would be the Dunes Lake Sebastopol Sanitary District. Nutrient Polishing Proposal. It is here tonight for the FYI, but Greg Coulthurst is here. He's been active in not only that, but the Frank Mighty situation, so. Greg, you want to give us a down and dirty on this one?
Sure. A couple months ago, I had three environmental engineers come up here and tour the sanitary ponds, Dunes Lake, and kind of the watershed in general, and kind of gave them the idea and summary of what we have done as a committee at the town level. And the three engineers were actually pretty excited about having a system that could work without electricity and enough land to do it and could polish the treatment water pretty efficiently, very effectively. So it was kind of everything was lined up, everything's there. And at the end of the day, we asked them basically, "Well, what can we build, or what can we do?" And they said, "Well, let's put our heads together and come up with a proposal." So this letter that I sent to the committee members and to the town basically says that for the cost of $8,500, they can come up with a concept plan for this polishing cell on the school property. And it could be one cell, it could be multiple cells. But essentially, what would happen is the water prior to discharge to the creek would go into these polishing cells in that soil area, and you would use plants, trees, et cetera, for phyto remediation of nutrients. So you would get nutrient uptake of phosphorus and nitrogen and other nutrients via those plants. It would also increase the time that it would take to get to the creek. It would either, you know, once it flows into the soil and is absorbed by the roots, it still would have to travel horizontally underground before it got to another wetland or the creek. So they basically said for a cost of $8,500, they're going to put together a concept plan. That concept plan then could be, how much does this cost, how it would work, et cetera, et cetera. The price tag on that would be, of course, much, much higher, but that's when we start looking at grand stash to install something like this. So they were pretty excited to put something like this together. The proposal went to the district, the sanitary district. However, we are still waiting for the DNR to come up with the limits on their permit. So it's kind of in a holding pattern as to what does the district have to follow as far as state rules, if anything, anything additional. As with this concept plan, I'm sure they don't want to put anything together until they know what kind of levels they have to meet. So that's where we're sitting right now. We will be looking for some kind of funding to put this together eventually.
I thought I read that you might actually get a grant for that?
There's one grant that looks pretty promising, but it's only for $3,000 maximum.
So the 8,500 would be for the conceptual plan?
For the conceptual plan, they will put this thing together and what detailed costs and how it would be worth.
You been in contact with David Lifson?
Yes, I have.
He's in agreement with it?
He's -- he likes the idea, he likes the concept, just not going to invest the money until they know what they have to do. Whether or not they would invest the money in this property.
They're waiting for a permit?
They're waiting for their permit, which I believe was due in June.
That's what I thought. I thought it was due in June, and they have yet to give them any guidelines on it, huh?
In contact with the DNR, and they say it's close. It's not out for public comment yet, but when it does, I'll share it with you folks.
They're looking at all nutrient discharge, not only phosphorus, but nitrates as well.
Right. The individuals, especially if you look at the bottom of the letter, it's the flowers. He's the one I worked with, the one in -- let me on here, Carl.
Kettle Marine?
The Kettle Marine Lutheran soils. And that one was primarily for nitrate treatments. But yes, nitrates and phosphorus is good.
Has there been any headway or any positive proof of the alum treatments in the pond? Have that been carried out?
They did some experimental treatments on the, what they call jar test. So they took some water samples out of the ponds, sanitary ponds last fall, November, about the time they did a discharge. They were able to get the limit down, about 70%, down to about 1%. They were able to get the limit down about seventy percent, down to about one part of a million, I believe. Cost of that, I think for the year was about $5,000 a year. So we could do that as well.
So if we go the route of the polishing pond, the alum treatments might not be necessary or could be in addition to yet?
It could be, it depends on what the limits the DNR said. I mean, if the polishing, I mean, there's no guarantee that the polishing cell at this point in time is going to reduce it to pick any number. I mean, I can say it's going to be better, but how much I can't, I can't tell you that. But the alum treatment is though, that will, that will reduce the phosphorus by about seventy percent. But they would have to do that prior to every discharge.
Problem with that is it ties it up within the pond and spill area where you do some type of phyto remediation, it, the plants can take it up as long as it doesn't recycle and it's kept within the plants, then it's probably the easiest way to get rid of, especially the nitrates.
The other problem with the alum treatment is that they are going to increase their sedimentation rate in the ponds, which then is going to mean they're going to have to dredge sooner. Don't ask me how much sooner, but they've talked about wetland systems where it would be just a wetland with plants. The problem is when the plants die, they release their phosphorus. So something like this is upland, it's going to be retained in trees, you could harvest that every thirty, forty years. The idea would be, would also be that this would be a study for the school. Something to study.
We certainly could put, as far as land consideration, we can put that on a school board agenda, probably at our next meeting, so we could discuss the, you know, well, once you know how much extra land you need.
Right. Yeah, right now, this is just to get these guys to put some serious hours into it, it's going to cost some money.
Well, it's here tonight for an informational item, then.
That's right.
If it needs to be more than that, then we'll have to put it on the agenda differently. We thank you for your time. Okay, the next item would be the Roadwork 2014 Budget Session right around the corner. I'm asking that you all take a hard look at some of the roads that we didn't do very much to this year and see if you have anything that needs to be accomplished in 2012 or 2014. What we do have so far is that the extension of Shower Road from Cave Point Park to the Jacksonport Town Line has the interests of not only the, the park system for the county of Door, but also the Dunes, Whitefish Dunes Park. And in the month of November, I will be making an application for some local road improvement program funding. In your packet tonight, you should have had the Town Road Aegis Project questionnaire that Linda and I filled out to start the program. And also a quick proposal, not really a guarantee, but option one, two, three, and four as to the application on the Shower Road project. Be mindful again, these are 2013 prices, so with any increase in oil and/or anything else, they would more likely than not be increased for next time around. Forest Road and State Trunk Highway 4257, we did pave the westerly shoulder. It was after we had the district administrator up here from DOT. And we proposed and we told them what our problems were and how we wanted to correct them, and it didn't take very long after that for us to get the permit to get it accomplished. And of course, the state allowed us to do it, provided they didn't have to give us any money to get it accomplished.
Very generous.
Yeah.
Project still needs a little work though.
There's some shouldering that's going to be.
Has not been completed yet, and I'd like to see that that gets done as soon as possible.
We're aware of it, they're aware of it, just that they pulled off to do another job. Okay, so if you be mindful of the fact, we did talk previously about straightening out the angle of Forest Road coming there. Last time, we couldn't qualify for a local road improvement project, and it's really too bad that we have to wait for accidents and the seriousness of it before they'll give us any authority to make the change. But have we experienced any real problems after that shoulder went in, Steve, or not?
The shoulder is just unbelievable. It's just like the northbound traffic, and I got that deceleration, like cars are able to fly, go by nicely. Now with that shoulder, when you go southbound on the west side of the road, it just.
It can pull off at sixty miles an hour.
It just makes it nice. I mean, there's no gravel spitting, it's just, it's just smooth, very smooth.
I sat out there one, one weekend, not, not intentionally, but I got caught up in traffic going both ways for about ten minutes. I was sitting on Forest Road. Eventually, I turned around and went the other way. Yeah, I didn't see any activity that would have even looked like it was going to be a close call, so.
It just makes it safe when people aren't going forty miles an hour on the ground.
Yeah.
Thirty-five miles, forty, forty-five, whatever it is, it just makes it a lot smoother.
All right.
And safe for the people turning on Forest Road, southbound traffic.
All right. Progress. So anyway, the 2014, as I see them, and I'll give you a heads up, you can take a look at them between now and October 3, unless we prioritize, I guess would be the term. We need to take a look at East Dunn from 57 to Weber. That would be St. Peter and Paul Church area. Jarman, Clark Lake to Town Line. And for some reason, we did pieces of Nelson Lane from Clark Lake to Town Line, and whatever we did or did not do, it is not holding, so we might have to revisit that one. And Clark Lake, although it was a coupler some years ago, it's beginning to break up and from Highway 57 to Lyce is in need of some activity.
Okay, Highway 57 to, okay, west.
West Dunn would be also a good candidate. That would be from Martin down the hill to Bay Shore. And the culvert that is south of Bechtel, on, south of Whitefish on Bechtel, is sinking and rising as indicator that we might have to replace that culvert in tow, so. If you have any others, bring them forward or make a note. We do have two areas of depression. Matthew Road near County Trunk T, that would be by the Gilbert Farms. Elaine Drive, which would be north of Edwards. And we took care of the depression in the road on Maple Heights Drive. Other thing we need to do, take a look at the amount of trees that are encroaching on the roadways. If you don't do anything before, suddenly you're taking down a large tree, so if we could just trim back some of the brush, it might be advantageous. And if you're over on County Trunk T, John travels this daily, Nelson Lane to Glidden Drive is going to be pulverized and damped too, I guess.
This week.
It will be pulverized this week and paving will be accomplished next week. Okay, questions, comments? All right, that's for starters. First responder group agreement with the county has apparently finally been approved. I say finally because it's gone now to the EMT groups. My latest correspondence was dated September 12th and indicated that they have finally had a meeting of the EMR crew chiefs to go through the latest revision. And he thanked us for the delay in approving this until it was a workable item and doable. I checked with our, was he our?
Crew chief.
Crew chief, and he indicated that he had no problems with it. John is a member, so John, what did, do you have a take on it or not?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a lot better than it was, so they're not demanding as much stuff.
So it should be the final version.
Right. It was, there was some wording in there that wasn't right for the first couple of them, so, but it's worded right now, so.
Okay.
I would be in agreeance of it.
What level of compensation do you get for that premium rate?
What's that?
What's the level of compensation you get working for the premium rate of $150?
That would be through the town.
Yeah. What level of coverage do you get for that?
I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Linda that.
It's based on that rating system that, remember when our agent Dell Herbold was here a few meetings ago? The rating system for, was it a combination of EMTs, EMRs, first responders throughout the state? John, am I stating that correctly?
I think it's for everybody, it's covered by our workers' compensation, but the upper liability is only like $5,000. It's not very much at all.
Oh, you mean how would they, like, if somebody got hurt?
Well, I mean.
They would take what, what your level is and they would have to base it off of a full-time person at that level, so.
Level of pay.
Right.
For a full-time person, but only up to a certain amount. Correct?
So it's nothing that's been.
One hun, yeah. He came up with the estimate of $150 per first responder per year.
To get, they haven't established what level you'd be compensated at.
Well, everybody, if, it would be, as EMRs or whatever, you would be compensated as a, because there are no paid EMRs in the area, you would be compensated as a full-time EMT of the closest municipality.
Base rate.
So they might have to go probably to Green Bay to get a full-time EMT crew or wherever, you know, and you would be compensated at that level.
At that level, whatever that level may be.
Yes.
Okay.
So the six figures.
Yeah, I wish.
Any other comment I did, question I had was, on the very front page, it says, now therefore, in consideration of number one, agreement shall become effective on May 1.
Yeah.
And that May 1 is important only because that's when our new medical services advisor, whatever, came about, and that's when he wanted to date it, so. It will be retro to May 1st.
You got any outstanding claims back to that date, do you?
No, we don't have any. I need a motion then to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the first responder group agreement.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. And previously, it was going to the first responder group, and then I think the eventual end, Linda, did it also show the town board approval?
Yes, the last page has the EM Services Director and then each municipality as well.
No.
Or fire department.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. New Business Items Discussion and Action, Zoning Classification of Valmy Institute and City Limits, Core Area Public Information Input Discussion Meeting Wednesday, October 23, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. John, you want to analyze?
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting on September 12th at 6:00 where we stuffed the envelopes and got them ready to mail. They have been mailed out, and it was for the informational meeting on October 23rd. At that time, there'd be a questionnaire from the county for each person that's in that core area to fill out. And after that, we were still on schedule to have a meeting November to compile the results with the county. And then we figured we would have a second meeting in December, another public meeting, informational meeting, so. And then after that, we would, we would have to decide whether we recommend to the town board that we put a zoning amendment together for everybody that would want it. It'd be a group deal where either you could get on board or you might not want to get on board, so we will know more after the 23rd when the people come in and tell us if they really want this or if they don't.
Your informational letter indicates that it's an opportunity.
Right.
To give property owners.
Chance to.
The opportunity to provide input to the Plan Commission and the Planning Department on potential rezoning of the properties in the area. So everybody got the maps as well?
Everybody got that letter, they got a map of their area. If they were in Valmy, of course, they got a Valmy map. If they were in Institute, they got an Institute. And.
All the property owners in the affected area wouldn't have been notified, right?
Every property owner in the affected area, yes. There was close to, I don't know the exact count, but it was close to 250.
260.
260? Okay. 260 mailings that went out.
All right, we'll have more notice of the activities then before October 23?
Correct.
Next item would be the Disaster Preparedness Strategies and Best Practices Training Opportunities Sponsored by Senior Officials Workshop, December 12th. So if you are a senior. It's in Menlo County, if you care to attend. No proper notification, you might be able to get your plate. Bay Lake Bank Depository Resolution for Authorized Signatures. Normally, we do have three people authorized to do the signing of checks, and our checks do require two signatures. So it would be the clerk treasurer along with the chairman and the vice chairman. So in this regard, we needed to remove Tom Durbin and insert Dan Wiffle, so I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by John, seconded by Chuck for the change, and is that going to be okay with the bank?
Correct. The bank needed a formal resolution.
All right.
On file.
We don't have to do one of ours, we could just do one of theirs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, signify and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The approval of a voucher bills and claim, as they already went through and you looked at them, need a motion first to approve.
Although we approved the voucher bills and claims, August.
Although we approved the voucher bills and claims August twenty-two thousand and thirteen through September twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made in the second, do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carrying. The announcements, Historical Society presents the Geisel Farm history and if you were listening to the official Door County radio news station, our clerk treasurer was the guest of Eddie Allen this morning.
Damn, you missed that.
You missed that one.
I missed that. Sorry, Linda.
We're very appreciative of Eddie Allen and W D O R for having that opportunity for the, for our historical society and other nonprofits in the area. He gives them an opportunity to go on the air, promote your event, tell you a little history about the event, about your organization, so we truly appreciate that and there is no charge for it.
Okay, the Geisel Farm history will be on Sunday, September twenty-nine at two at the town hall. Public work session, the budget is Tuesday, Thursday, October three, and our next meeting is October twenty-one. If you're interested in the convention in Madison, it's October twenty-seven, twenty-nine. This is the towns association. Do we have a due date on application for reservation?
Uh, I believe it's October eighth and I would be interested in going for one day.
Well, can we?
I think a couple other clerks from Door County are going as well.
Do we have to send any supervisors to actually do the supervision?
That will be up to the supervisors, I guess. It is in Madison, you know, so things could get very interesting.
I know, the county board is there today.
Stay away from the Capitol.
Okay, the other coastal byway grand opening Thursday, October thirty-one. But that has been changed or not? This is the photo shoot.
There's actually, there's two photo shoots going on. This is the photo shoot on behalf of Wisconsin Public Service Foundation.
But this is October thirty-one, is what?
October thirty-first, they're shooting for the official grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony of all the kiosks.
You're going to cut the ribbon?
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to simultaneously cut open eight or ten of these things or something? Is that what they're, hmm, should be good.
Okay, your correspondence was all there, you had fire reports from the city.
Just a comment on that.
Yes.
Looking through some of these and highlighting, I think, you know, I think there's a duplication of services that occurs quite frequently.
Thirty-three oh three.
Thirty-three. Yeah, I mean.
I got that one too.
Yeah, and we're, we're building, we're being billed on a per incident basis, I mean.
No.
But I mean, well, just to get the gist of it, is that.
The only difference is the sheriff will bill for the second and more false alarm.
A return, a return?
Yeah.
Or false. Well, it's just that, you know, the fire department responds, the sheriff responds, we've got Jacksonport responding. In some cases, we had at least three, three agencies responding to the same call.
Right.
I think, you know, when it comes time to negotiate for our, our contract.
Six years from now, Dick, hang on to it.
Well, that's the problem with seven-year negotiation.
No, that's not really a problem, trust me. It's an advantage in this case.
Aren't we required by law now that you must have a fire department personnel there? You must have a first responder, you must have a sheriff's department, or is that incorrect, John?
For a water rescue.
Just for water rescue?
Well, no, what?
Car, I mean accidents, car accidents and.
They've got a lot of money invested in equipment, they have to get that boat out in the water periodically.
Well, the car accidents, it's a page, the cops are coming so that.
When these guys bump into each other, you end up going home after somebody's already.
Well, let me put it this way, if you're in the accident, don't you want as much help as needed there?
Well.
Or would you rather just say, ah, we'll call them later?
Call them if we need them.
Call them if we need you.
Well, okay, I.
Meanwhile, you're back in town and somebody's dying, right?
It's like if the ambulance is coming for you, I don't care, but if it's the governor of the city, you better hurry up.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess it's falling on deaf ears.
Pretty much.
Yeah, okay.
It's better to have too many people coming and turn them back than it is to have not enough people coming.
Okay, the preliminary estimate of January first, two thousand and thirteen population, we are increased by twenty-seven persons.
I wonder if we could find who they are.
And we are now at two thousand six hundred and fifty-five. And you had two withdrawals of the DNR Natural Resources Managed Forest. Anybody have any idea what the, why this happened or what?
I was trying to figure that out. It is near Schwartz and Arctor Lakes. I can't figure out why the DNR would be withdrawing from Managed Forest, but maybe they've decided to do something else with the property.
For the land they're very close.
Maybe they had to come out if they didn't comply.
The DNR is the landlord.
Are you familiar with that, Greg?
Well, the DNR was.
This is the managed forest.
Managed forest.
Forest land. It was a withdrawal order.
Would it happen to be the property they bought from Dick's?
No.
No. It's only thirty acres.
Shereen Smith.
Seventy acres.
It doesn't change.
Thirty acres and then this was near Schwartz Lake.
Thirty and forty acres, seventy acres.
Yeah.
Unless they're planning.
Would be one of the foresters either Bill or Chris transferring that property to another.
We do know that it's a requirement that the legislature.
Conservator.
We got them back to X's.
Okay, and then the two thousand and thirteen Wisconsin Great Lakes Chronicle has a picture on the cover of Washington Island School House.
You can pass it along.
If you want to take a peek, we do have a copy.
Yep.
Linda, can you explain that last sheet, the.
Transportation?
The shared revenue and expenditure.
Um.
Department of Revenue notice.
That's our, I seem to have lost my last page, somewhere along the line. Oh, there it is. Yes, the amount that we will receive yet in November, that will be our last shared revenue payment for the year, forty thousand fifty-eight dollars of the total forty-five thousand six hundred and three. And I just received this year's estimate and unfortunately, I don't remember if it was higher or lower, but we'll find out on budget night.
Okay.
Please, no surprises.
Okay, here's the Wisconsin Great Lakes Chronicle. Agenda items for the next meeting?
Speech.
Do you have any?
You ever been there?
Let us know if you have anything coming up.
Since October twenty-one.
Okay, I think we've covered everything else. Motion would be in order to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here we are.